So in the interest of starting the board meeting about on time, I'll ask Mr. Devon Fuller, select board alumnus, to present a better Brandon drawing.
So I'm here instead of Bernie Car. And this will be the last drawing of the hard hat $50 giveaways. We've given over $1,200 away doing this and to all these wonderful people who have purchased hard hats. Now that Route 7 project is coming to an end, the DVA and the Chamber of Commerce are going to start working on other projects for the great town of Brandon. For instance, November 9th, from noon to 3, we're having the work the wait, celebrate, Better Brandon, and the location is going to be here at the Town Hall upstairs. That's November 9th, from noon to 3. That's where the Buzz Card grand prize giveaway of $2,019.07 will happen. There'll be $50 giveaways from all the merchants in town that'll give us $50 gift certificates. There'll be about 45 of those. There'll be free B. Hop pizza, free ice cream from Esco. Ice Coke, there you go. And there'll be red clover tastings and hard hat photos.
What day is that again?
It is the 9th of November, Saturday, and we will be doing photos for everybody who brings their hard hats. We want to get everybody to wear their hard hat. Come, we'll get a big picture of everybody in their hard hat, and then we'll have some other photo ops with people with their hard hats. So this has been extremely successful. We feel like we have a successful way to take that Segment 6 project and have a little fun with it. I'm going to stop talking because last time I did this, I spilled my water.
Looks like a fallen nail. I should have got my own nail.
If you draw your own name, you have to give it back.
He's hesitating.
It's time to serve.
Number, I got two of them. Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
What was the other number?
I didn't look.
I believe Melman.
No, I'm kidding.
Just Heather and Nelson.
Time, boy. This is my first college fight. So that's the last time you have to see Bernie Car or $50 bill. Well, we're very excited about that part. Thank you very much.
Thank you to you and the Chamber and the DVA and all of the merchants who supported the program and Mr. Atherton and Mr. Moore for arranging some funding for economic development during the Segment 6 project. So at this time, I'll call the select board to order. First item is to adopt an agenda. Is there a motion on the agenda? So Mr. Wyman moves, and Mr. Wyman seconds. Any changes to make? If not, all in favor of the agenda as is printed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Item two, approve the minutes about October 14th. Mr. Wyman moves to approve. Mr. Coolidge seconds. Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes as they were submitted?
I think there was one.
No. If no errors or omissions, all in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions. Item three, Mr. Atherton's report.
It's my report for the weeks on the 14th and 21st, and an upcoming for Segment 6 to the next couple of weeks. I'll start out with it. Segment C and after, the imprinting asphalt crosswalks and traffic cones, which they've been working on the last week and today. Construction of concrete stairs at various residences and businesses by Jiffy Mart. Punchless items is receding, curving joints and others identified. Segment D, continue work on retaining wall adjacent to Briggs Lane, guardrail, handrail installations. Segment C, completion of retaining wall to the Brandon House Pizza. Segment B, continued improvements within Central Park area, brick marble granite walkway surfaces. Preparation and placement of concrete walks and installation of raised crosswalks in lot A, which is the parking area in front of Brandon. Segment A, cooperation installation of sidewalks, structural soils, and it's used to promote roof growth in the shallow areas. General line striping throughout, permanent and temporary. You see they're marking the pavement today for the permanent recess. Continue adjustments to elevations of fire hydrants. We've had quite a few people ask whether they're so short. This lane drainage, structure cleaning for the storm structure boxes we put in. Elevation adjustments in topside of the trees and landscape will continue, and driveway preparations and pavement. And they continue to address punchless items. Unit Street sidewalk, the storm drain structure that needed to be ordered will be on site tomorrow. Construction will resume. I did let our Unit Street folks know that at coffee today, so very happy. Other happenings, we have a new hire in the highway department. This has us back to four full-time on highway and one on buildings and grounds, so we're pretty happy about that before winter comes. We're starting to put a draft budget together for the upcoming budget meetings in November. Rack department news. October 25th was the fifth time we've had a Spooksville Trump or Trade event at Estorbrook. Music, more food, music, food, and a bunch of candy were part of our largest celebration yet. Special thanks to collaborators, the Brandon area toy project, the Brandon Free Public Library, and the Shreve PTO, and the folks and businesses who showed up to make a fun night for area youth. Another fall sports season is in the books. We would like to thank the Mira, the volunteers who have volunteered hundreds of hours to enrich the lives of these youth football, soccer, and cheer participants. Pre-K kindergarten, first and second grade soccer to Lance Laraway and Lily Bixby. First and second grade NFL flag football, Greg Whitney and Dylan Keith. U-10 boys soccer, Ben Gomorrow, Darcy Weizenbeck, Marty Feldman. Third and fourth grade girls soccer, Lance Laraway. Third and fourth grade pet football. Gary Monoy, Matt Mallory, and Greg Babcock. Fifth grade boys soccer, Gail McGegan, Sam Stone. Fifth and sixth grade soccer, Crystal Wheeler, Stephanie Ketchum. Flag football to Whitney and Kevin Blyer. Some faith grade pet football to Whitney and Kevin Blyer. And our sponsors are Brandon House Pizza, Ethier Wood Products, and NFP. And pickleball, we'll be starting back up on Sunday after noon at the National School on November 4th. Join the pickleball commissioner, AKA weekly from 3 to 5 in the gymnasium for football.
Thanks, Mr. Atherton. Questions for the town manager from the board, the school? Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, let's play the ball. I asked you and I don't.
I have no idea. Okay. It's, I don't know. I've seen the pickleball court, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's like tennis with paddle ball, paddles, in a smaller court.
It's a contained court, isn't it? That keeps the ball in play.
It's a little smaller to get, it's like large ping pong almost. I mean, it's less running, but it's really popular with the boomers. But people of all ages can enjoy it, but it tends to be enjoyed by those of the boomer sex. Heads to grow and populate.
We did it in high school, Mr. Moore. I did not let her.
The ball?
Questions for the town manager from the public in attendance? Any questions for Mr. Atherton, Mr. Smith?
Is this going to be, is the Segment 6 going to be finished this year?
No. It's already, the finish date's already going to push back to January 19th, I believe. Well, probably, the majority of stuff's going to be done. There'll be some landscape left, but they have to have, a lot of road stuff will be done. So there'll be some small stuff. Some trees will be removed.
It doesn't seem like there's nowhere near many people here now.
There's not. There's just the finish crews here now. So the crew that's here does the sidewalks and the curving, and most of that's subbed out too. So the major stuff will be done. The roads and the stripings come in, and the lights will hopefully be back on before the holidays.
I wonder if we're going to go through another plan?
No, we don't have another construction season. No. Those paving, they were marking it up.
I heard rumors that they extended it through next year.
So it wasn't, it's when they do change orders for the project, when there's a change order that's done because something was either missed in the plan design or whatever, they get days added on to that because it's something outside of the scope that was set. So yeah, it's changed twice. It went from November to December 9th, and then it changed probably two months ago to Jan. Actually, I think it's January 8th is the date. So, but they'll be done, the majority of this, in a few weeks because everything's going to freeze, so.
That's what, basically what I was asking was, are they going to have the time?
I think they're going to be really close to being done on the original end date, so.
So this project next to the town office was kind of an add-on.
Right, and that's not going to be done until next year.
We can't work in the river.
You can't work in the river, so. But I drove down Franklin Street today, and I thought, they're going to get this done?
Yeah, they got a lot to, go drive down it today. Pretty impressive there. Yeah, they'll have a, yeah.
Yes, a question about the landscaping. If, in the contract, if a tree dies, does it get replaced?
Yep.
Okay.
So a lot of the trees, because I've asked this, because I really was suggesting to them not to plant everything now because it's almost November. They already have trees in inventory that are there anyway, so they're going to put them in the ground and see what happens. And if they're definitely just, we get new ones, so yeah. And then we have a five-year tree plant too that was done by UVM a few years back. How to properly maintain the trees.
Yeah, I mean, I think sort of naturally, not, we do a lot of large landscaping, probably not everything takes, so I'm glad to hear that.
No, there's definitely warranty on that.
That's great.
Is the trailer going, one more, is the trailer going to stay in the park or?
I'm waiting.
It looks like a mobile.
Well, I've threatened that we're going to send them a tax bill for it, so.
It looks like a mobile.
No, I think it's, I think it's actually gone.
Yeah, this one, no, it's gone out of there, so yeah.
Other questions for the town manager from the public? Okay, if not, we'll go along. We've got public comment and participation, or items not on the agenda. We'll start with the board, Mr. Wyman.
Nothing.
Mr. Guy, Mr. Bailey? Okay, to the public, for public comment and participation. Mrs. Sheehan.
Did you get a report from Tom Kilpak?
I did not, but you spoke to Mr. Atherton today.
Could you kind of give us an idea?
Am I correct?
Yeah, we spoke briefly on it. We're kind of passing by. He has visited the site again. He did look, and said there is quite a bit of debris on the property. It's not trash that's going to bring rats or whatever. The zoning administrator has sent a violation letter to him, so there's a process there that's, I believe it's 14 days from the letter. And that's where it is right now. I know he's had a difficult time getting hold of the person that lives in the camper because the phone, he is either disconnected or we're being blocked. So he's trying to get around that, so I think he'll be site visiting more often up there. But that's starting to get pulled out too.
Yes.
And I want to let you know, I talked to Tom Kilpak today too about this.
Great, okay.
And I echo what Dave was saying.
Right, right.
And his suggestion was the zoning violation was probably the next part of the system that needed to click in and go through that process.
Right, okay. I'm just curious. Considering the way people are being forced to live nowadays in RVs or whatever because of homelessness, has the town addressed any of those problems as far as rules, regulations, permits?
Well, the land use ordinance.
But the land use ordinance doesn't take into account somebody living in an RV that is not a permanent residence. You can't tax it because it's not a permanent residence, but yet it's sitting there, and they're living in it as a permanent residence.
With no law.
Does it have any water, electric, anything?
I think because it's a registered vehicle. Is it registered?
I doubt it. I doubt.
I mean, you don't know that in either of the ways.
Yeah, no, you can't try it. It's not a vehicle because it's not drivable. You have to be attached to a truck.
But it is still a registered, technically supposed to be a registered vehicle.
Okay, all right. So what does that mean?
So I mean, that means you can't tax it, so.
But they're living in it permanently. It's a residence to them. They own it. It's their house.
I own an RV too.
Yeah, but you're not living in it.
I, well, I do two, three weeks, two, three weeks a time.
They've been there since May.
And I do have, I do have campers that stay at a campground. But they have sewer, electric, and water. But they have sewer, electric, and water.
Exactly.
But they're there for six months.
Yeah.
There's a timeframe, I think if you look for the state, there's a timeframe.
Days?
Don't quote me on this because I'm not sure, but it's just shy of half a year, I believe.
Okay, so they've been there since May, Mother's Day. They are still in there. How many days is there?
Our blue line, I'm just looking it up, it says 21 days. Recreational vehicles used as non-commercial housing for house guests, provided that such housing is used less than 21 days per year.
That would be what the zoning violation, that would be.
Okay, it's, okay, all right. So it's zoning violations. Frasier owns the property. They own the structure.
The property.
Who gets?
Well, the landowner would get it.
The landlord. Of the structure or the land?
They're property, so it would go to the landowner.
The landowner. Okay, so just, I'm throwing this out, just for curiosity. If you find him, and you find him, and you're driving crazy, just finding him, don't take him to court. And he builds up enough fines, can you put a lien on his house?
Well, there would technically be a lien once we started finding him.
And his grandmother will not let him lose the property, trust me. She doesn't want him back there. She will pay, but she'll also make him, I mean, just, I don't know what else, you know, to, you can't go out and head on.
The health and safety thing is when it comes.
They have a gas, from what I understand, a gas heater, possibly?
Well, still, I mean, that's not a safety.
Say what?
That's not a safety.
Yes, that's, and they have small children. We've gone over this.
I share your concerns, and that's one reason I talked to Tom Kilpak.
Yeah, but it's Jeff that.
And I think that's the next piece of this puzzle we're going into. I'm sorry that it's taken so long.
No, I know.
I mean, he's not going to, you sent him a certified letter, as you noticed, he's ignored it. Send it back, you know.
It's a frustration we all share.
I mean, you know, it's like, okay, send it back. He did it two weeks, so send him another one. I mean, it could keep, you know, to.
Annoy him? Drive him crazy?
No, he doesn't ever go.
Well, why, the mayor's base plane.
Frasier said that they were supposedly moving the structure off the property.
Yeah, that he never had.
That's, you know, they're not making.
It was their last year.
So I think that the practice is that, you know, the violation is issued, it's followed up on. If it continues, the town can issue another violation through the code officer. But if it is, if you're talking about Mother's Day, and this is the end of October, not, that's six months yet.
Boy, they're going to be in the middle of what, November, December, January?
It'll be in November, right?
November?
November.
So I mean, I think we just have to, the process is there to respect the property owner's rights, and that's.
What about all rights?
Well, their rights, frankly, are, their rights are the rights that the system is designed to respect. It's designed to respect everybody's rights.
I understand that.
But we're not talking about doing something punitive to anybody but them. So they have to have adequate response and adequate recourse to what the town requests.
But zoning wise, I mean, why not turn around, okay, let's turn around, can we get a site inspection? I mean, the town can ask, ask for it.
No, we can't.
You can't ask? You're not allowed to turn around and ask?
The only properties we inspect are rental properties.
Not rental properties.
I know, that's why we can't inspect it. The only things that we can inspect are like rental goods.
You mean, so you can stand in the road and look, but you can't do anything?
To a residential, that's not.
Well, no, if like for that.
That's what I said. Don't you think you should upgrade your policies or something?
It's not, it's not the town's choice. Like, this is what the state of Vermont allows the towns to do.
Is it the state statute takes precedence over town statutes?
We can only write ordinance that conforms to the state statute. If we write an ordinance that doesn't conform to the state statute, we can't enforce it. And if we did enforce it or attempt to enforce it, we would be contested in court, and we would lose. So we have to write ordinances that do what statute allows.
I cannot, this thing is falling through the cracks.
Well, I think, you know, in Brandon, we've had a number of experiences with mobile home parks. You know, with some difficulties, and this is an area that, you know, the legal cities and towns has addressed, and they have said that this is not unique to Brandon. You know, this kind of rural housing is, it's a challenge for many, many communities. And it's a challenge that I think a statewide solution is probably going to end up being the way to go.
It's not a rural housing. It's an RV with nothing. With nothing. I know, it's got a roof over there, yeah.
Are they still there?
What?
Are they still there?
Yes.
Yeah, they show up after between 8:00 and 10:00 o'clock, and they leave by 6:00 in the morning, so. And the only one that could be stopping would be the police, because they're not, nobody from the town is going to be there. That early in the morning.
Unless Jeff or Tom knock on their door at 10:00 at night.
Well, midnight, you wouldn't have, you know, but.
So I think at this point, we just, you know, we have, we have a timely update from the health and help officer, which was today, to the town manager and to one of the people. And we have the information that the code enforcement officer, the other person, has successfully got the violation notice into the hands of the landlord.
Okay.
So now we need to allow the time that happens after those things.
So you have to wait 21 days for a violation?
Yeah, the 14, is that, is that, yeah, Dave, the strategy, I think it's 14.
What is the 21 days? They can only live in the RV for 21 days?
Around 14.
Back to what Mr. Moore read from the land use ordinance.
It's 21 days.
Really?
But they've been there since May, so.
So, I mean, it's not like Mr. Peter Susie goes around, and you would not, we would not want, I would not want him going around looking for people violating the land use ordinance. That's not how we've approached it.
I understand that.
So, you know, when it was brought to the attention of the town, they followed up?
But after 21 days, what?
21 days from Mother's Day would have been in the middle of June.
Right, what, okay, so after 21 days, then what?
So usually what would happen would be a phone call or a friendly letter kind of thing first, and then eventually, if there's not compliance or response, then maybe the violation gets issued.
How long have we been dealing with this? Six months.
Almost six months.
The zoning administrator and the health officer have been involved with this since the initial complaint was brought to the town.
Yeah, we all, we all just need to keep monitoring it, and.
Especially since, you know, they're using a gas heater or God knows.
Well, we have a similar instance in town too where some folks lost their home to a fire, and they just got a permit to rebuild their house and put a new dwelling back on. And they are living in two RVs while they're waiting for it, so they've certainly been there past 21 days. You know, and they're.
I mean, something like that is always coming.
But just listen to me, hear me out. You know, it's really no different that these folks are living past their 21 days too because they're kind of down on their, you know, their house burned down. They have a family, and they want to put their property back. You know, that's the, that's the choice they have right now, is to stay there until they can get their new dwelling.
Are you talking about the ones living on Old Basin Road or somebody else?
No, this is a different piece of property. What I'm saying still is, there is another RV in town where it's past the 21 days that they're living.
I understand that, but these circumstances are very different. They are going to be moving into a house that will get permitted and with a CO and everything else. So, okay, fine. It's not going to be an ongoing thing. This is an ongoing thing because they are, they're not waiting for a house to be built.
They've been in that RV past 21 days.
And the circumstances.
It makes a difference to live in town with all the country. That must be the difference. Because, I mean, it's not making me.
Mr. Chakaskin, there's not a difference.
There's 21 days for living. You know they got a house coming. They got to wait for the insurance check the whole nine year. Where the RV that we have next to my house, been there since almost six months now.
Are they hooked up to electric and water?
The other one, probably.
The other?
Yeah.
I mean, I would imagine they would.
They would, because they get there a little.
I know I'm annoying you. I'm sorry.
It's probably not helpful even to the discussion to think about another, you know, property. It's probably, it's probably, I think, at this point, we've said what we can say, we've learned what we can learn. We've, you know, expressed concerns that are concerns to everybody. But I think all we really can do is, is wait for the process to move in its orderly way.
And hope nobody gets turned the meat on.
I, yes, and that's right. You know, the town doesn't have a lot of authority to tell someone, I don't like the way you're living, and so.
But if it's dangerous, if it's possibly dangerous, and nobody can go in and check to see if it is.
You know, if there are children or something, like maybe that's a matter for departmental children and families.
DCF will turn around, they got a group.
Has anybody contacted DCF?
I have not. I do not have any knowledge of anybody having.
We would.
Anybody can.
Anybody can, yeah. If there's, you know, people who are mandated reporters, if they're aware of the situation, like they report things. I'm sorry it's not fast.
Oh, I know. Frustrating.
Yes, there's. Other public comment, participation. Yes, Mr. Franklin.
I was wondering how the town's standing on demolition of houses on Loop Road.
Oh, I think Mr. Atherton actually has an update.
So one of the houses, we had, well, we had to do asbestos surveys, and the two houses that we already purchased, they're the 419 and 449. One house had some asbestos in it that we had to remove before the demolition. Then 57 and 31 Newton Road, we just got approval from hazard remediation that we can actually use a change order with the current demolition company to demolish those two. But we'll have to do the same thing. We have to get asbestos survey done on both of them, and they'll come down. So we've already ordered, we've already had the asbestos survey. The remediation will have to be done on the one at 419, and then we'll probably be tearing both of the 419 and 449 down at the same time.
Other public comment or participation?
Yeah, I always mentioned last week that there's a FEMA meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday night, and.
Oh, this is the flood?
Yeah, right. Rutland?
Is it? I don't remember that the evening.
It seems like that would be a good opportunity to request a new flood plain elevation report since we now have the culvert and stormwater sewage.
Well, I know that the town will be represented at one of them. I don't know that it's the right opportunity to request a new flood plain. I think that will have to be done, you know, in writing, which we can do also.
So it's already in process with the overflow caller. I spoke with the engineer at his voice and king not all that long ago, when we were going to request a math amendment, so it's, it's in the works.
So it's been raised with FEMA?
Been raised with our engineers. It has to go to FEMA. We have to.
Oh, they're preparing, they're preparing the amendment, okay.
Your voice and king is preparing an amendment?
Other public comment, participation?
Just wanted to say that in preparation for the legislative season, sticking off in January, Ben, just want to, if anyone would like to talk to me about any concerns they have of upcoming legislation or concerns, or pieces of legislation they think that needs to be put in, I'm glad to make those comments. And I've been attending a lot of informational sessions in Rockland County about upcoming issues. Tomorrow we go to an insurance meeting. Today I went to a upcoming, I went to a meeting at Casson University about their educational changes that are going on at the university. And then also went to a hearing this afternoon on stormwater runoff. And the ruling that was passed in 2015 associated with clean water, and they're looking at three acre parcels of land, three acres and larger impervious surfaces, so large parking lots. And that's something to keep our eyes on, and we need to help out some, a few of the businesses and schools, actually, that we have in large, have large parking lots that need to be either looked at that will fit these requirements and see how it all works out, but it could have a big impact in some of those.
Did it happen to identify any in Brandon yesterday?
Uh, school, Autumn Valley, Northern Woodcraft and the old tubs factory out on our district. Of the three in Brandon, I think there's three, there's three in Pittsburgh as well.
Yeah, we've been discussing, folks at the RKC about this too, so we were picked as one of the first towns they wanted to come survey.
Okay. Yeah, and I think there's some opportunities for appeals if they, if they, these three sites, maybe there'd be ways to make some workarounds on some, on some of this, but it could be, can be, could be very expensive.
And is it like roof surface plus?
No, yeah, roof, just looking at manmade pavement is what, is what I see, that's just pavement. So it's something to keep our eyes open and they're doing it, I attended the first hearing, Rutland, today they're doing hearings in Grand, Grand State.
Thank you.
Thomas doesn't have any pavement.
Pardon me?
Thomas doesn't have any pavement. It's all dirt.
Okay. Maybe that, maybe they'll, maybe they'll be able to not have to have too much, maybe that's gonna be something they can look at.
I believe it was Woodcraft, actually, that was.
It was definitely Northern Woodcraft, the third one, I thought the third one was the, was the old tubs factory, but maybe I'm wrong.
On Arnold Street?
That's what I thought, yeah, I mean, there's three, there's only three sites in town. So anyway, just keep heads up and we'll see where it goes.
Further public comment?
I have one last thing, I think I just realized, I noticed Russell Jones is here and if I'm not mistaken, this is his last time in covering Brandon. And I, I wanted to thank you for, for the work you've done. It's, it's important to have reporters cover our town.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
You've done a great job this year. Russell is, I forget, he headed back to Texas. Russell's headed back to Texas after this month, so.
Yeah, I mean, hurricanes come through Texas, it's hot.
Come back to business, I'm glad. Yeah, we hope we'll see you again.
He'll be back here with a little water.
Further public comment participation. All right, if not, we'll move along, we have a cybersecurity policy discussion to launch. So, Mr. Giles, I think you had a point for me.
Right, so I went to a webinar, I, I, the webinar came to me and this is a VLCT training. And it heightened my awareness of the need for our town to have a cybersecurity policy, of which I understand we don't have one at this point. But I did, with Dave's permission, go around and talk to people about their computers and kind of what they would do if they found something wrong. And in, in the course of my thinking about this, I kind of started to home in on describing this as kind of a three level, in a way of looking at this problem. There's a zero cost training, which is really perhaps the most important piece, which should be done on a regular basis to make sure anybody who's using a computer in our town at, you know, at the town level, understands basic computer hygiene. And even though we all kind of roll our eyes and say, of course, we know this stuff, it, it changes often enough and there's scams come up often enough to where it struck me as being a useful and necessary, a regular aspect of, of keeping our system safe. And it don't cost us any money, it's really a matter of creating a policy and a management. The second one, which they alerted us to, is it, I'm starting, and you should all know this in the camera, January 17th, 2020, Microsoft is no longer supporting anything prior or previous to Windows 10, earlier versions. And the supporting part's really quite important because that's how you protect against viruses and vulnerabilities to your system. And a couple of our computers, I went around and checked operating systems, we have a couple that are Windows 7s. And it, it seems like it would be a good idea for us to find money or budget money in our, in our upcoming year budget to replace these computers so they can all be properly maintained. And the third level, I think, is a more significant thought to think of. And this is an administrative, a network administrator kind of awareness, making sure we have the right person who is, who really has the chops to, to operate at a global level of awareness of cybersecurity. Because at this point, and I, I don't need to tell you this, because apparently before I got here, the town already had a ransomware attack. And come to find out, small towns are perhaps the most vulnerable because those are the ones the hackers considered to have the least protection. And so I think, you know, just because we got it once doesn't mean it won't get it again. And, and I think it might be worth talking about whether there's network level protections, whether it's better servers or, or vigilance that might require hiring someone to come in on some kind of regular basis to be aware of who's trying to get into our system and being able to verify that things are not out of place. And, and so I, I would like to promote, I, all three of those in a discussion of cybersecurity.
And there is no model policy from the league right now, is there?
No.
Right, that's my understanding. Do we have, just, we have, just as a matter of our general insurance with the league, we have some protection for cyber security attack or something. So do you propose that we draft one, do you propose we wait for some league training? Or did, did the training component you were talking about, did that take the form of we hire a consultant to come in and take the form of someone knowledgeable, you know, do some talking or we do?
Regrettably, the training was really mostly about computer hygiene. And that's why, and it's recorded, and that's why I think that all staff should have, should be required to see this short training. It's less than an hour. I, I, I propose we come up with our own policy. I think this is still new enough territory to where the reason they didn't have a model policy is because there aren't a bunch of them out there. And I don't think, I, I, I don't think it would be harmful to take a first swipe at.
Always change it.
Yeah, update it as time goes by.
Well, I'm game, yeah, what's, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm game, I think it's, like, something would be.
The, the first experience that we had with this event was kind of a good attention getter. But I think that we, we got through it relatively unscathed, but can't count on getting through it unscathed again. I mean, we didn't really get through it entirely unscathed, there was a lot of work product that was lost and had to be recreated.
We discovered that our current IT folks hadn't backed a lot of stuff up that we thought was auto-backed up. So they're not with us anymore. And we did get someone local to come in and help us, which is, it's been really good so far, but. Yeah, we need to do more, I mean, it's, you know, if you guys just saw what happened and Norwood shared, I'm like, it's all.
Well, ransomware is one version of the problem. I think the other thing that became apparent to me is I asked people like, you know, suppose you accidentally clicked on something, what would you do? Because that's just a hazard of working with computers and maybe you do the wrong thing. And there needs to be a protocol for who you call, you know, who knows and how they follow up and, you know.
Self-destruct switch.
Well, we have, fortunately, and we still need to, because, you know, it changes every day, but we have been really good with, since this last one happened, that like our spam filters are pretty, pretty sensitive, which is good. So, you know, they really block a lot of stuff and those.
Except for us.
Well, you guys are, you guys are.
Well, we get more Chinese firearms advertisements.
But I would also raise a philosophical point, which is that, you know, one point of view that I ran into as I talked to people was that we should just, you know, lock down our system and make it so nobody can get in and like, you know, we're just gonna make it so, you know, almost go back to the floppy disk era or that data's all like on something I can take home at night. And, you know, it's, it's interesting that condos is doing a tour around the state about open meeting law. And I think we need to be as accessible as possible for people to access legitimate information through the internet. Because that's the idea, is that if you're doing research and you want to find something else, you should be able to find stuff out. And so I think we have to balance the, the desirability of openness and easy access with the necessity, the necessity of protecting ourselves from harm. And I think that that's a really interesting conversation.
Do you wanna do what we always do and pick two to write up a draft kind of thing? Sure. You're gonna be away for a while tonight.
I'm away.
Oh, I shouldn't say that. You're unmoved for a while.
Well, Tim knows the most.
Tim knows the most. Tim, Tim and Dave, Tim and me, Tim and me and Dave. Is that, is that, is that okay?
You do, you do such a good job of writing stuff up.
You're the most taking guy here, you know, you.
You're not gonna leave it to Jason now?
I should, I should.
Yeah, I think I owe Mr. Giles a lot.
But nobody acted.
Okay, all right, we're on it. Item six, appointment of budget committee number seven, possibly. We have had two letters of interest, right? We have had a letter from Barry Varian and a letter from Cindy Bell regarding participation on the town budget committee, which is about to convene to help draft the budget for next year. What's the pleasure of the board?
My pleasure would be appoint Barry Varian to the budget committee.
Mr. Coolidge wants to appoint Barry Varian?
Sorry?
Mr. White, in seconds, any discussion?
I'd like to amend, am I allowed to amend?
You absolutely are.
I, I, I'd like to see us appoint both of them because it seems like we have two people that showed interest and they both seem to bring positive aspects to the, the budget process.
Okay, so second by Mr. Giles to appoint.
I, I agree with Tim because we also have lost two members, so it's not like we're really going above and beyond what we've had before. So I think it would be great to tap into both.
Is that a second, Mr. Bailey?
That is a second.
So the second, motion by Mr. Giles and the second by Mr. Bailey to appoint both Cindy Bell and Barry Varian to the budget committee, any discussion on the amendment? If not, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no, any extensions? All right, so then the main motion as amended is to appoint them both, we have to vote again. All in favor of the main motion as amended to appoint Cindy Bell and Barry Varian to the budget committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no, the ayes have it. So as part of this, Mr. Appleton had a budget committee scheduling amendment to offer, right?
Well, yeah, but it sounds like from conversation that the majority are not in favor of changing it to before scheduled select board meetings.
What do you guys think? There's been a suggestion to do it, we had chosen November 3, 10, 17 or something.
December.
December, December 3, 10, 17, we had chosen. And there was a suggestion to make it, rather than that, to do it at 5 o'clock on select board nights.
Starting.
I, I can do, I can do any of those personally, but I, I'm not crazy about doing them and then following it up to a couple hours of selectless meeting. And I, I know that in years past, we did some on Tuesdays and some on Wednesdays. So can we just possibly change the, the dates from, from the 3, 10 or whatever to pick some other dates that would work?
The, the, the 3, 10, 17 all work for me where we moved to, I'm sorry, I'm getting over to December quickly. If we go into Wednesdays, I'm, I, I teach Wednesday evenings and so I, I wouldn't be able to make Wednesday meetings. And I, I totally respect.
Either month?
Either month. I, I totally respect how hard it is to schedule. And so in this way, I think it's a necessary balancing act. And so I, I would just put forward that it's most convenient for me to stick with our original December dates. And, but I will find a way to make the other days work if, if the balance needs to.
Stephen, Wednesday, what about Thursday nights? I mean, if we need one to accommodate PD, can we do it one Thursday somewhere in there? Can you do any Thursdays if we have one Thursday somewhere in there?
I would make one Thursday work, I, I teach Thursdays as well, but I mean, one Thursday, I would make it work.
I, I probably can in December, but not in November.
Yeah, these were all in December, like we had, we had targeted, so.
Yeah, in fact, I, I also was contacted by Jane Coolidge, is she on the budget committee?
Yeah.
And she was unable to make the November meeting because originally, because she can't make the November meeting.
Oh, that was the suggested change.
The suggested change.
I, I guess one thing would, it would be nice to start in November, it's just because we'd be here already for a select board meeting. Even if we could just start discussing this maybe an hour before the meeting, I don't know. I just think it would be good to get the ball rolling on, on the budget. Because I, I think we've got some things to think about with positioning and running for other things that's going on.
Well, you wanna do it, you wanna try one before the select board meeting on November 25th?
Okay.
And then try and do the 3, 10, 17 that we had before?
I like that.
And then maybe, maybe four, four of the five of us get to be here every, every Tuesday.
So 12, 3, 10, 17, and then 11, 25?
Well, Tim, you're gonna start that one, we're working.
Maybe five minutes, an hour.
Only an hour, we can start, I mean, we can at least get our ducks in a row that night.
Okay.
Is that dual?
Yes, dual, all right.
And then the 12?
Yeah, you know, like I told Dave earlier, it just depends where, depends where we're at, but I, I'll be here, but I might be late.
And what time was the 12, 3, 10, 17 meetings, is that 7:00 PM, sorry? Lily said last time.
Yeah, probably did, forward on the, I'll change it.
Mr. Varian is a new budget committee member, are you having any schedule conflicts with the dates that we're talking about?
It's time, please, thank you.
He's working on it. That's nice.
And we very well may have one beyond December 17th, we usually do, and we often, we have one at the end of the year. One we're really done done, just still looking.
When is the target for conclusion?
Very, very early January. Right, first, I think the first select board in January is the hoped for. But I think we, depending on when the Mondays fall, it could go as late as the second select board meeting in January. Yeah, depends on what day of the month.
So just, I know I might have a prior commitment, well, I know I have a prior commitment on December 10th, so.
So maybe we could do that on a night that's not entirely yours, like the Tom clerk.
Right, right.
You know, maybe have Tom clerk come at December 10th meeting or something.
We can, we can pre-meet on that or something.
Okay. Looking back in the minutes, it doesn't say we voted on this last time, so maybe this was just a consensus decision. So if we reach consensus, that we'll, we'll keep the dates that we had at 7:00 PM and then we'll add a date of Monday, 11, 25 to 6:00 PM.
And I think it said that you were gonna be meeting with the department heads before that, so maybe you can.
Already, they've already started.
Yeah, if you, if you send us who you wanna do one nights to.
Maybe we could have the crews on the first meeting.
Well, I'm thinking, yeah, that, I know, you know, Chief has commitments on Tuesday nights, so I think, I think we could come on the 25th.
That's, that's the one to kind of get set anyway because it's a big piece, so.
Very good, okay, thank you. Item seven is the municipal stuff, there's a resolution for the new truck lease. This, this is the truck, Mr. Appleton, that we voted last meeting, is that right?
Yes, and I actually do have the financing that I just wanted to run it by you guys, so you know, this is a, it's a, says municipal leasing consultants, but this is a purchase, it's a tax exempt purchase. We're doing a five-year term at 3.77%.
Monthly payments, you know that?
That's, and, it's not monthly, it's a annual of 21,000.
And how does that match to the one we just paid off?
Uh, well, we haven't paid it off yet, so we're waiting to see what happens here. It's about 11 grand less.
Less.
But it's a lease and we don't own it anymore.
No, we don't, we just, the program's called municipal leasing program, we purchase so much, just that's how the municipal.
Okay, thank you.
So we do that with every, it's kind of a company we use.
What's the pleasure of the board on the resolution that's presented to accomplish the purchase of the 550 truck that we approved last meeting?
I can most approve that.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. White. Any discussion on the resolution?
Yeah, very fine, so, so we have the, we have the funds available to pay off the one, the one we're working. I mean, I know we're, we're paying some different things, it seemed like we're not in last year's budget, so we're still in good shape.
Yeah.
And some of our, some of our other expenses seem to be a high risk. Some of the legal, I think we're gonna be over an hour.
We're fine with that.
And, and Union Street, I mean, I don't think we, we hadn't really budgeted any money for Union Street. This culprit didn't throw us up.
We'll be fine.
Okay. But, so we did have, we have some money in the highway to take care of that.
Good, thank you.
So is the motion and a second to approve the resolution to accomplish the purchase of the F-550 that we approved last meeting? Further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no.
No.
Any extensions? What do we got? Three, three, one, zero. Yep.
You said no.
No, I said aye.
Four and four and one, I think is what we had.
I didn't vote.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I do, I only voted, I need to make a three.
Okay.
Three, one, zero. Item B is the warrant from the general fund, $271,649.77. Pleasure of the board? I'm going to vote approve that and also. Thank you, Mr. Coach. A second. Second, Mr. Giles. Discussion, any questions on the invoices?
Um, well, this one, I guess I found the area at the end. So the Union Street, the consulting for Union Street, or just 15 grand, that, that was to, to put this new thing in the ground.
That's the onsite inspector. So we have to have that.
So that was planned.
Yeah.
That's, that was a. Okay, that's, I thought that was one of the over.
That's in the.
Only question here.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of approving this warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any extensions?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman abstains. Three, zero, one. Item C, the Route 7 warrant, $745,657.62. Mr. Bailey moves to approve. Is there a second?
Sure.
Mr. Coolidge, seconds, any questions?
Dave, have you looked at this and seen that it's in order?
Yes, I have.
Thank you.
And what is the brand area Chamber of Commerce promotion material?
So we first, we got additional money for marketing, last year, I guess. Bill's kind of our marketing guy and he's been doing a lot of stuff for the Chamber, whether it's events. I think this one was for some, some brochure type map things with the Chamber, maybe, maybe.
Which Chamber? Is this the, is this the Lazarus map or is it something entirely different? It's entirely.
And this is probably, it's our promo stuff. We're, we're done promoting, so it's almost done, so.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman abstains. The ayes have it. Okay, so at this time, we'll reset the select board and we anticipate the two executive sessions that were published on the agenda in the next.